We still have a meeting.
We're not done.
We're not done yet.
We think we had a slide?
No, no.
Ready by the leave. Okay, whole business. Anything, Mary Jo?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Whole business.
Whole business? Um, well, Lewis is not here, but I just had the one question if he did get a price on the, um, labels.
No, 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 labels, labels. No, for the labels?
No, those.
Labels, just the labels?
Yeah.
Did you get a quote on the labels?
Yeah, okay, that's all I had for our business.
Anything, Earl?
Um, no, I don't have anything to do with it.
Charlie, any own business?
I'm glad to let me call.
Commissioner Hicks? Okay. Lewis?
The first time I had was the, uh, a quote for a sixty-five gallon toast, but I didn't get that.
Can't hear you.
I had requested a quote from Kevin Bean, uh, with Quasimian and Zellweger for a container, um, sixty-five gallon toast, but, uh, he couldn't get the information to me, so, uh, I can't present that until I present it the next week. Uh, I thought I might have, which were one. Ward had brought up at the workshop that they wanted to dedicate one point five million dollars to them.
We can't hear, I'm sorry.
If he talks into the mic, he can...
Pull the mic up to him.
How long you been doing this?
Can you hear me now?
No.
Lois talking to the mic, we will hear you.
All right.
Okay, one point five million dollars, uh, from the undesigned and reserve unbalanced into a designation for Elton Parks Rec Community Building. This is the ordinance that authorizes the, uh, town to do that.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution R. 1, 2011?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Okay. Let's see.
Anything I had was a proclamation, um, I was asked for, for National Park, um, Day, uh, which reads proclamation, whereas the National Park Trust has designated May twenty-first, 2011 as National Kids to Parks Day, and whereas National Kids to Park Day empowers and encourages children and their families to get outdoors and visit American parks, and whereas it's important to introduce a new generation to our national parks to offset the decline in park attendance over the last decade, whereas we should encourage children to lead more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, and whereas National Kids Park Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants, and whereas National Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors, and therefore I, Joseph Alfonso and Virtue, the authority vested in me as mayor of Town of Elton, and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, and the citizens of our community, do hereby proclaim to participate in the National Kids to Park Day and encourage residents of Elton and the surrounding area to make time on May twenty-first, 2011, to take their children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park, and witness thereof, we have untussed our hands to seal sixteenth day of March. Do I motion and accept the proclamation?
So move.
Second?
Thanks. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mary Jo, anything?
No.
Earl? Earl, anything else?
Uh, just a couple items. A young lady got sick yesterday, had to take her home to Wine and Broken. I know you don't make the comparison, but I was certainly pleased to see that they had new trish cans every home, so I don't know what they went through to get that, but, uh, makes a difference, I guess, when your trish collect to come through to get your trish. So, you know, again, that's something we are striving to do here as well. And secondly, um, I was on the board when the workshop came about. We had, uh, Rob Alt as Steve, mayor, and the workshops were usually one hour in duration. Uh, people couldn't talk, and, you know, the commissioners were supposed to provide input to the agenda. I think maybe we need to, uh, look at workshops to see if it needs changes. Um, you know, a lot of those people here tonight were at the last workshop when it was thoughts, the, uh, the rental, and, you know, I just wonder if providing the last ten or fifteen minutes for the people to talk make a difference in, uh, the results that you have. I don't know. And I question, and I still think, when you have workshop, I still think we ought to have an opportunity to discuss some items we, I need to discuss. I think right now, mayor, I'm not saying you, but I know when it is sent out, I guess those are things that Lois put on the tab as far as what we're going to discuss.
I overlooked, uh, a comment that I wanted to make. Thank, uh, Mr. Owens for writing an article in the paper, uh, in reference to the Recreation Center, but, um, or whatever you want to call it, um, Community Center, Recreation Center, whichever one you want to call it. But I want to make something clear. Even though he's taking the story based on what was talked from our last meeting, conversation was drawn up about that. There's nobody else after nobody's property, nobody's trying to go against anyone. We want to work with the community to provide something for the kids. So I want to make sure that's straight in the paper, because the comments, I didn't want to make a comment by myself, and I asked for the board's support on this. You wrote the story, but the people that are taking it the wrong way, we're not after anybody's property, we're just in conversation about where we can put a piece of property or, uh, recreation center. If we can work with a landowner or whoever, then that is what we want to do, work with the community, not be somebody negative. Even though the story was brought back from years ago... Oh, I'm sorry. Even though the story was brought back from years ago, it's one of those things that we have a whole different perspective on what we want for the kids and how we're going to get it. It's going to be by working with the community, not against them. So I want to make sure that's clear, because I, I know one guy in the stands, right, I mean, in the audience, that I know, I respect very highly, and he's probably ready to jump on me, but we're talking about it.
You gonna join?
No, I'm not done, because I, I thought I'd get a response. And, and, and if you reflect, the last time we discussed, what we discussed tonight, we met two hours, and the, 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 uh, people who rent, don't get an opportunity to talk then, and then when it come into a situation like that, they're still limited to three minutes, so what input do they have on every half? So I'm, I'm saying, maybe we need to look at these, uh, workshops, giving them opportunity to talk there as well, because that meeting actually is informal. The meeting tonight is formal, so, you know, there are some restrictions.
Okay.
And Lois, do you still query the, uh, the commissioners as far as they want an input on the, uh, workshops?
Just use that, just send them to me, that's, uh, okay. Uh, we can do that.
I'm just saying, it's consideration.
Yeah, we can do that. Anything else?
No, because I think Mary Jo was also one of those interested in them people talking at some of the workshops as well. I mean, like I said, it could be on a limited basis, because they don't want to take away, you know, what we have to talk about, but some thought.
Okay.
I mean, I have a, I do have a question with that now. Based on the, uh, public comment tonight, could we have not decided to have another workshop on that? Would that, could have, could that have been an option?
Yeah, it could have been.
Rather than open up the workshop to public comment, could we have taken their public comment and gone back to a workshop to have further discussion?
It could have.
Maybe that should be considered as opposed to opening up the workshop, which will basically have another public meeting.
But you understand my point? The last time we talked about this, they didn't get a chance to talk. The night they get a chance to talk, and then you're only limited to three minutes. So if I'm working in your town, when do I get a chance to expose what I have? That's all I'm saying. It doesn't have to be, but I guess maybe, I'm saying, maybe consider both ends, giving them a chance to at least express something.
I agree with you. I agree with you totally, in the fact that you should have some form to voice your opinion on, on what we're talking about.
If you look at the workshop, there wasn't as many landlords there at the workshop as there were tonight.
No, but I think the workshop that Commissioner Gibbons was speaking, uh, we were discussing something about Artesian, and Artesian was in the audience, and we were uncertain about some things, and I did make the remark, "They're here, can we ask a question?" And, um, they were just there in the audience, and I believe that's what Commissioner Gibbons was speaking of. Am I right?
Basically right. I mean, you know, if, if we need to have a relationship with the people that we serve, you got to provide them some opportunity to talk with you. I'm just saying, just consider it. Doesn't have to be.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Uh, that'll be it.
I have a question. It's about my driveway.
So, just a minute. Um, Parks and, um, Ms. Linda Dumbar still here?
Yes, I am.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Oh, okay, do you want to come up? You want to talk about the Parks and Rec Community Building?
Well, basically, I'm, I'm here in reference to, my understanding is that they're going to put, they're going to make a park where, next to where Steve is, that, that's what I, that's what my understanding is.
We have not made no decisions.
That was my comment, I just made.
Okay, then there's no need for me to speak.
There's talk about it. Now, if it comes up, there'll be a public hearing, you'll get a chance to voice your opinion.
Right.
And then with Mr. Gibbons is saying, if we have a workshop, then there's a chance for somebody to talk and tell us, so before we come to another hearing, we can make a decision based on some information that's given to a, that a work section, work section. And that's what Mr. Gibbons is talking about. Is that right?
That's right.
What we did at that meeting was earmarked funds specifically for a rec center. We made no decision on where, or we have all that planning to do, we just wanted to earmark those funds for recreation or a community center. We did not bring up, you know, things were brought up about what we had discussed years ago, but that's not what this group is doing.
Ms. Zellweger?
Before?
Hold on, just a minute.
Before.
Hold on. Did you want to, on your roller skating?
Yes.
Come up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just here again, um, I know a few months ago...
Can't hear you.
Just pull the mic to you.
I know a few months ago, we had, um, I came to you guys, um, looking for support for a local roller skating rink in Elton to benefit Cecil County, so I'm again coming, just trying to, um, reach out again for support. It's a great need for, a lot of the problems I kept hearing about landlords is children on the street, not having anything to do, um, I heard again about a recreation center, um, I know we have things like that, the Y, the Boys and Girls Club. The problem with most of those, they close at six o'clock in the evening, uh, most of them aren't open on the weekends, um, a lot of the parents don't drive or can't get to places like that. Um, I think we just need to create a greater need, other than just a community center or rec center, something that kind of benefits everyone, families, children, seniors, you know, so maybe we can kind of partnership and just do something better than just, uh, community kind of center. So I'm still here for support for the roller skating rink. It's a great idea, um, the town needs it, a lot of the children want it, family want it, um, yeah. Cecil County's been running fundraisers and things like that, just trying to get more people to back us and support us, and it'll be a lot of help if, um, we can get more support from the county, from the town, from you guys.
Well, you're doing a great job. I know from all the emails I've gotten, your business plan and the drawings that you've got, it's really beautiful, it's really nice. And I definitely sent a letter to the, um, um, Community Housing, or Community Development, and see if we can help you. DBED, uh, to get you, see if we can get you, they can get you some money or some funding for you. And see what they, I don't know if they've got back to you or...
Yeah, they have. They've set me in the same circle I've been going on for eight months. I'm already going through the Department of, um, DBED. I'm already attending classes, um, at Cecil County, going through them. Their position is, they don't provide money for startup businesses, um, the state basically told me that, um, I'd have to go through the county, so, the state decided, they referred me to the county DBED, which I've been going through them for months, and they send me back to you guys all the time. It was just their whole circle. The letter was great, I thank you for that, but, um, it wasn't anything that was positive or anything that was, um, in the right direction for me. It just sent me in a kind of a circle for a couple of weeks. Yeah, they told me there was nothing they could do.
I'll be right.
Yes, so, back to my guarantee, who I said I'm in Cecil County now, taking courses through them, business startup, finance and strategic planning, just, uh, everything like that. So I just need, um, maybe other resources or just, like, just that community backing. Our children definitely need it. I mean, every night she looked out there, they're walking around, they're wondering. Um, hardworking parents, it's not like it was when I grew up. Mom stayed at home with us, dad worked, it's not like that anymore. We got to create something for our kids, and we're going to lose more and more of them. Some pregnancy drugs, I just found out that Elton had the, um, the highest obesity rate in eighth graders, we got to get our kids moving. And roller skating is great. Earn six hundred calories in one hour, is recognized by the American Heart Association, but, um, I think it's great. So if you guys could help me anyway, that'd be great.
Okay.
But how is it, I know you've been here numerous times, other than directing you to channels to get resources, what else is there for us to do to help you?
It all falls back with county, um, community grants and funding, um, funds that would, you know, be used to offset and provide equity against future loans that we would need to make the project success. I'm not some, um, franchise person or some business person coming here trying to make a big buck. I'm a mom, I'm a wife, I'm a sister, I have a twelve-year-old son, I'm just trying to create, fill a void, if you will. You know, our kids need it, and I'm trying to take on this all by myself, and I need help. Our kids need help.
And secondly, and I know what you want to do, but economically, it's tough.
Yes, but roller skating is very cheap recreation. It's better than the movie theaters.
And, and I understand that, but what you're trying to start up, I guess you're going to need a location, you're going to need money.
I have a location.
You have the location.
I have an architect, I have the building, I have all that done, I paid the architect already, just need additional funds to, uh, do the build out. We went to Commissioner, um, John Oskar, Mary Jo, she went to a meeting with me, we tried to get them to do the build out, they couldn't do it, so I'm back here. But we did try, but it don't table, you guys did a build out, tack it on to the lease, and that wasn't successful. But we do already have a building, great. Mark Clark did a beautiful job with the rendering, I sent them to you guys, he did it, and now it looks great. We just need additional funds, unless, I don't have a million dollar home to put up as collateral to secure the funding.
But I'm saying, the location you have, is that something that you have to purchase?
We can do it at least with the option to buy.
Okay.
And the landlord has offered to, um, do our lease for a whole year rent-free, to help us to get...
That's good.
You know...
Like, because you're putting how much money into the property, so...
Right, right.
Again, just for the record, uh, again, the Town of Elton, we support you, as far as like, if you get a roller, uh, up and running, we, we know we want, we want to welcome that in to our community. But, you know, I have several conversations with you, and I've got to say it for the records. Taxpayers' dollars cannot go into the funding of your recreation, um, facilities such as a roller skating rink. I can try to guide you to ways of you can get support and bring in, um, extra monies to help you, but as far as the town, we cannot go and use taxpayers' dollars to support your project, because if not, we'd be in violation. And I'm just doing that for the record. I care so much about you, I met you, you're a nice lady, you have good intentions, and I hope somehow this happens, comes to pass, but those investors out there that have that money, those are ones you got to grab a hold of and say, "I need you, I don't have no place else to go." That's the best I can tell you. I mean, but the town, if you get what you have ready to bring to the board, I mean, I'm all for it, because we need something like that in the town. But as far as the taxpayers' dollars, we cannot give you a dime of it, because that's not feasible for us to do that. Not feasible, that's not, uh, against at all for us to do that.
Well, I'm not a commissioner for taxpayer dollars, I was just thinking like grants like economic development, things back to DBED, um, creating jobs, you know, things like that, so I was more like, you know, is it specific grants that is available from the town to help create jobs or to, you know, just to enhance the community around there, that's going to make the property value go up, things like that, so that's more, I was not per se taxpayer dollars, on taxpayers.
But I'm, I'm saying, because I know the perception we get from people hearing this.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm going to say it really about a line, I don't want to hear, when you leave, "I can't believe she is for that." I want to make sure it's clear. Okay.
I think we'll, we'll do what we can do to help you and, and guide you and try and make some contacts that you can get a hold of and see if it can help you in any way that like possible we can do.
Okay.
So we'll do all we can do for you, because you've got a wonderful idea, and it's a beautiful thing you're trying to do, and it's something we could use. So we would shortly do anything we can do to help you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay.
A year ago or so? I made the papers through you without ever meeting you about eminent domain on my property, on my driveway, and the same words were written again yesterday, eminent domain, with my name in the same sentence.
That was...
On my driveway.
That was, that didn't come from us, that was just a story, it was brought up from years ago.
I'd never saw you before, may have saw you, but you never approached me prior to the meeting before you even asked me about my driveway. You never did. And then you were in the paper expressing eminent domain about my driveway for the rec center. All right, that's, I'm very fair, and really, that's all I saw. But right here, you already want to keep nice parklands for people to go see, and that piece of property next to me in my driveway, that's the nicest park you have in Elton. There's more animals there and stuff, the best trails, best nature piece that's around the town. It's a gold mine. Goes all the way to Baltimore Pike, the fish hatcheries, bird sanctuary, wildlife refuge. There's a lot. I get to enjoy it every day. You know what I'm saying?
Well, maybe we get some kids, um, their parents want to bring them down, maybe to see you and see if they can take them along.
Well, they don't bother me, you know, they can be in the park, I live next to the park. The real issue is the driveway that you need to use to get to the park.
And when I said that we want to talk and work with the community, I was really basing that on you, if we were to seek that property.
I, I can be open to sell or trade.
But, but we haven't got to that point yet, and that was just a expression that someone wrote in the paper from a conversation. So please, if we do involve that...
But I never saw you before, and then eminent domain, and you were in the same sentence a couple of years ago.
If we involve that, we will make sure we involve you.
The two words and my name in the same sentence again.
May I, may I ask a question?
That was discussed. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You want to develop the nicest place in town into a parking lot?
Yeah.
And put the bathrooms next to my house? Well, I have the old drawing still of what the proposal is, where the rec center is, where the parking lot is, and where the bathrooms are.
That might be another example, I mean, did, did we have public comment on that before that was done?
It was just a conversation.
There's enough, there's enough...
I apologize, you took it the wrong way, because the paper, everything you read may not be what you actually is going on. So we apologize, because before we've done anything, we wanted to talk at the board and see what we can do, how we can communicate with the property owners, and then do it the right way, instead of having somebody come in and argue with us. And I promise, I will do it the right way.
When I first got that property twenty years ago, the town used to come and plow it and take care of it. No. And I've been loading it up in gravel and, ever since, which is great. And put a lot of money in that house, too. That house is two hundred and twenty-five years old, it's paid taxes longer than anybody, and I need a year off. I'm just saying that, it's the oldest place, too, here in town.
Well, if we get discussions, we might want to come talk to you and then...
Yes, first!
Yeah, definitely. Definitely.
Before the paper talks.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, you, I got the paper before you even come and talk to me about it twice now.
That's where my apology was, we didn't write it. And that's where we apologize, because I knew that there would be some negativity before we even got a chance to talk to the property owner.
There's a thousand animals there, every day. We're not going to have them bob turtles there where you couldn't develop. I'm serious.
Okay.
We have everything else.
All right. I appreciate it, thank you.
It's a, there's five acres, but I have, and then there's like, a couple hundred beside me.
But please be reminded, it's easy to write that word, eminent domain, but if you know your history and, and, and what have you, that's not easily done. It used to be done a long, long, long time ago, and very rarely in this age, do you have eminent domain? Trust me.
Very rarely done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Mayor, I didn't sign the list to speak after the meeting, but I have a question. Could you clarify what you were talking about earlier when you said you were going to... What did you say about opening the workshops up to the public?
No, I was the one who made the suggestion that maybe there should be a way for both the workshops and the public meeting, for the public to have an opportunity to talk, because like I said, if you have a pressing issue and you cannot talk at the workshop, then what you may have to say, the little time you're given during a meeting, will not suffice what you need. So if you had time to talk at each, you know, you can get your point and go off. I always think that people should be able to talk, because that's why we're here, to hear from people, not to shut them out.
But you didn't make a policy change.
No, I'm saying, they need to consider that. I reflected back when the workshop started under Mayor Alt, and like I said, I remember it was one hour, the people couldn't talk, and, uh, the commissioner presented whatever. So I just say that maybe they need to look at that to help us when we have a meeting.
Mr. Aaron, I didn't, would like to make this a public statement. I'm very tired as a citizen and a taxpayer of the town, as well as the board up here, and I think I know the board pretty well. What can we do to get the homeless off the street? We had people sitting in front of Mary Jo's office the other day, that thought it was just a pacifier, it, it upset. I realize the, we've had legal needs and stuff, but there's got to be something that we can do as a team. Stop serving dinner. Ask the church not to serve any more dinner, because they're here, they're going to stay. This is a home for them. And all they can do is call problems for the police department. When I was campaigning, you go out there and you talk to about twenty-five or thirty residents and pay for his bed, and I asked the question, "Why won't you come in town and shop?" And the question is, we will not put up with the prostitutes and the homeless. And I sit it every day, and it's not even near summertime.
Are you all aware, I've called Louis twice, and I did not email the mayor and commissioners, but are you all aware that the group that feeds them out at the tennis courts or whatever, that they go in under the farmer's market when the weather's bad and...
They give permission to do that?
They might, they might as well go up and, and, or come here in the side yard, I mean, they're in the middle of town.
Well, how do you use the permission to do that? That's, that's the town's problem.
If I want to have a party in the, in the farmer's market, can I go down there and invite thirty people and not have permission? Because, I mean, yes, they're homeless and they're being fed their dinner. To me, it's the same for us. And they're doing that, I'm assuming Louis did respond and said, the first time he responded, and said they did not have a permit, as far as he knew, they did not have anybody's permission. Now, they've been there again, and I'm sure they've been there many times, I just don't happen to be going down the street when the weather's bad at four-thirty in the afternoon. But if they're moving, now they're in the farmer's market.
We have people waiting there, who are behind us, where we live, on Dogwood Avenue, and putting their house on sale because of the candy, that stuff that's going over by rent behind Rosa Sun. There must be 20, 25 people in it. And the police departments are worried about it. But what did you do? I go to Charlestown, I've seen the homeless. I go to Newark East, I don't see homeless on the street. I go to Newark, and I don't see nothing over here because I think they bring them all over here. So what, what, what I'm saying is, we need a consensus of opinion, or give the officer and the chief some kind of authority. I know we can sue, but we need to do something. If you don't clean up open, that's one of the first big steps we need to take.
I'm, I'm not concerned with ACLU because people think we're intimidated from that. I heard a comment, that doesn't bother me because you make your laws, whatever, based on what you need. The ACLU, that, their job is to try to stir up something. I'm not worried about them. But the point you're making is a good point. We need to put up more no trespassing signs, then that would be legal grounds to remove somebody or whatever. But the last time that was done, it was done in the wrong way. So that's in, in the past. But if you do it the right way, no trespassing, no loitering, start dealing with some more signs, then the police may have a little bit more, use the word, uh, authority to remove these people. Maybe we need to start from there, and thank you for that comment.
Mary Jo, you got... The housing area.
Not mine.
I'm trying to vote behind my house.
If I'm right, one of the things that the problem, especially within the downtown areas, all the services are there, and we know that. And that's why they loiter their daily. Um, what we're trying to do at this time is, we're actually looking for funding now, and we have a piece of property, um, well, I say wait, it's, the Homeless Coalition has been around for about three years now, and that consists of the hospital, Upper Bay Counseling, social services, the college. Um, there's a lot of people on this committee, but we are now at a point where we're going to look to acquire some property outside of the town, downtown area, where all of their services will be in one place. So they can go there and get everything they need that they would normally come to this area for, to go to Upper Bay, or to go to social services, or go to the hospital, the health department's involved. Um, and we're at that point right now. So, um, we are also working with a group out of Wilmington, Delaware, they're called West End Neighborhoods, and, um, they've done this very, very successfully. They, they just really have gotten a grip on this. So, um, they're working with us now also.
You mentioned the fact that we're trying to CBG grant as well to...
Community block grant, to help with the acquisition of this property.
We are, we're gonna have to have some kind of, you gotta sit down with Senator Smith, uh, Fettin, or Doggett, uh, whoever's Doggett. But everything I'm saying, you gotta have some kind of law that's gonna force these people.
Yeah, and the problem...
And Mary Jo, listen, I'm a good person, but you keep feeding these people, and you give them everything they need, they're gonna stay.
And, and you know, Debbie, I don't know if Louis relate, that the people that are feeding that group that is under the pavilion at the farmer's market is, and I happened to just find this out right before, um, he asked us this, is a couple from Northeast that is feeding this group. They do it at the marina on nice weather, they come to the farmer's market when it's bad weather to be under roof.
Well, Mary Jo, I don't, you know what, I don't care who they are...
Oh, no, no, I, I understand that.
And what you're doing, they are doing something that's illegal according to your code, which is what we've been sitting here all night talking about.
But it's public property, it's just like we, if, if you were, say you, it was a hot day, and you put a chair down under there, and it's not the time when the farmer's market's going on, we can't ask you to leave. And that's the problem there.
Release that property.
If I'm trying with 30 or 40 people to have a party, I guarantee you that...
And I also checked with the health department also about that.
It's fine, I, I don't want to talk about the homeless anymore because they're, they're here, they, they're entrenched, and y'all aren't really enforcing your code to try to take care of them that.
We have, uh, Debbie, we have, we're trying.
No, you ain't.
You let me talk, okay? I let you talk all night, I've heard you all night long talking. Let me talk to the story, okay?
Thank you.
Debbie, uh, we tried, and we are trying. We got our hands slapped before, and they, it was done, but they've done what's done the right way, but we, it was done. You're right. And Gary, I would say to you, the churches are feeding these people, and they transport them, the buses that bring them around from Northeast, Chesapeake City, to Elton, back to Elton, down to Perryville, they bring them up from Perryville, and they're all coming this way. I mean, you can find people coming from Ohio because they know that Elton's gonna feed them and take care of them, not because we want to, it's not the town of Elton doing it. And don't put this in there, I'll have every church on top of it. The churches are feeding them, and they're housing them because they believe they're homeless. And there are a lot of homeless that deserve it. I guarantee you that, there are a lot of homeless out there. I mean, you know, if there are a couple paychecks, maybe I might be homeless. But I'm telling you that there are a lot of people out there that just want to be homeless, too. And they're the ones that bother you.
I know all about the homeless, and I know unfortunately, a lot of them, and I know you the lesson on homelessness.
I'm not giving you a lesson, I'm trying to explain to you.
Lesson on homelessness, and I feel as bad for them as the next guy. I just, I, as I said, that's the end of it. I...
So what do we do? We, we have a town that, that, uh, is being run by legal allies on top of it as far as the homeless people are concerned. Isn't it time then to get all the church leaders in here and talk talk?
I'd probably agree with you.
You know, try to come up where your committee's been going off for three years, this problem has been going on for eight, 10-year growing band. And it's not very nice to go around your corner down there and see a guy sitting there with a...
Uh, I call every day. I call every day. I, I, I totally agree with what you're saying.
It looks, it, when you call, what happens?
They come out, and they see them, they move, but they come back. There's nothing we can arrest them for, or they're not violating any crime, or, um, I, I don't know, I, I really...
Well, I, I understand that part.
It's very, very frustrating.
Under the pavilion, and I don't understand it, and I'm not, although I never understand it, and how I see it very simply is, okay, they were in the park on town property where they do not belong. Now they're in the middle of town, eating their dinner where they do not belong. So where are they gonna be next?
Okay.
Oh, that's, you know, I mean, the committee here talked about homelessness, but...
Come on.